All right, good evening if we can stand for the pledge.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Here's the microphone. All right, sorry this evening I'm a little under the weather so I apologize but my voice has been like this since Friday. I'm hoping at some point it gets better. The first thing that we need to do is we need to move the report of the chairman to the end of the agenda because Carlos was, is not going to be here until about 8:30 or so. So do I have a motion to move that and make that the new number 11? I move everything up one. Thanks Jerry to have a second. Thank you Shannon. Any discussion on that? All right, all in favor? Thank you, motion passes. We will move on to exemplary people and we are recognizing somebody tonight. Usually we recognize somebody in our district but we're actually recognizing Ryan Duffy who is from Stratford High School. John and I were talking a couple of meetings ago and I was telling him how I had seen this newspaper article and I had only read it very briefly about a student who was running a race and he had stopped to help another student who had a medical issue and I told John I was very impressed with the whole story and John goes, "Well, you do realize that the student he helped was a Masick athlete." It was one of our students. So I had said to John, "Oh, we need to bring him here to our meeting and recognize him. Could you arrange that?" And he's like, "Oh, I'll try." So thanks to Joe and Jack DeLaPiano who is here, who is the, is a Monroe resident and happens to be the high school, the principal of Stratford High School. So the two of them were able to get Ryan here to recognize him. And Joe, you want to, you're gonna come up and say some stuff and we're gonna come over this way and bring Ryan up.
A nice little story that kind of warmed our hearts here. It really speaks to all that's good about high school sports. I think so many times, you know, we hear so many bad stories and this is really a good one. So it's my pleasure to introduce Ryan Duffy tonight. And I wasn't at the track meet, it was actually the SWC championship meet so it was a, it was a high stakes meet. But Mo Shaletti was, is, was Ryan's cross-country coach. And I kind of got wind of this from an email that Mo sent to the executive director of the SWC, Dave Johnson. And I just want to read that because it was really, it was, it was pretty powerful. Definitely puts it way better than I could say it since I wasn't there. Ryan Duffy was running on the back trail of the course. This part of the race is out of view when he noticed a runner ahead of him facing down, slightly off to the left of the trail. At the time, Ryan was in the top third of the runners in the meet. It was without hesitation that Ryan stopped to render any kind of aid or assistance to this runner. When Ryan asked the runner if he was okay, there was absolutely no response. Ryan realized that this runner from Masick was in need of medical help and that he needed to get that help from the last place where spectators were standing. That late, that last place was near the starting line of the race. While Ryan ran back to that point, began yelling for help and hand signaling where help was needed. Someone in the crowd got professional help to respond. Once Ryan confirmed help was on the way, he went back to the downed runner. There was still no response but Ryan recognized the runner was breathing. Thankfully, there was a trainer and an EMT on hand for this event. Someone came by, believed to be a coach and their trainer, and took over the incident. They told Ryan to continue his race and the runner was gonna get immediate first aid. As time went on, Ryan's parents and I wondered what took place as Ryan was way off his usual finish time. After Ryan checked in at the finish line, he told us the above story. Ryan is quoted as saying, "I couldn't just leave him there, I had to stop. I continued on but my mind was on that runner. I have known Ryan, the athlete, the last few years. No one wants to win more than him. No one at Stratford High competes harder than him. No one works harder than him. Then there's Ryan the person. He cares about his teammates, takes pride in how they present themselves and takes an interest in their abilities to play sports." What would took place yesterday, this was written a little while ago, what would take, took place Wednesday, October 18th epitomizes what sports, especially high school sports, is all about. There's no question Ryan's actions yesterday deserve full marks for a job well done. I spoke to Coach McDonald of Masick, he's very thankful and reported that his runner suffered a spell of severe dehydration. He passes, he passed a message along to Ryan for his actions. Ryan went above and beyond true sportsmanship in handling this matter and obviously we know that to be the case. Congratulations.
Well, thank you so much. It's so nice to have some heartwarming stories that we can celebrate even if it's not our own student. But, I mean, going above and beyond and doing what Ryan did is certainly something we as the board, I wanted to recognize and bring him here to say thank you. Absolutely. All right, we will move on to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve? Thank you, thank you Shannon and then Christine as a second. John, do you want to talk about our resignation? Say anything?
No.
Okay. Anybody have any questions? All right, hearing none, all in favor? Great. Oh, I'm sorry David, did you have something?
No, I wasn't here so I'll abstain.
Okay. Okay, sorry, motion passes. We will move on to our reports of our committees and liaisons and first up is our Masick school representatives.
In Masick sports news, our boys soccer team made it to the state championship game for the first time in our school's history. They unfortunately lost but it was a really fun game, giant fan section, I would say at least 50 people there, respectful. Football, they have the senior night which is for football cheer and dance. That will be Wednesday at 7:00 against Newtown. Our robotics team has a competition at Masick on December 2nd and it'll be all around Masick and I'd like to see if anyone can come back if they have a chance. And our winter sports startup after Thanksgiving.
Tomorrow is a big day for Masick's business department. We are throwing Business Day. I say we, I'm the deck of vice president so I have to help coordinate with this. It's an all-day thing where we invite guest speakers to come in and talk about in different disciplines of business throughout all periods of the day. And we'll end that with a Family Feud event which is gonna be really fun because both students and teachers are participating. The musical occurred last week and two weeks before that, Once Upon a Mattress. The cast and crew did a fantastic job as always. PTC will be holding a meeting Wednesday, the 29th at 7:00 PM. And Lily Palumba was recognized as the Rotary Student of the Month for November. And on December 2nd, there will be an SAT, not held at Masick but just as an update for kids. I know round this time last year I was gearing up for test-taking so just as a reminder, December 2nd, not at Masick but there is an SAT being.
Great, thank you. Does anybody else have any committee reports this evening? No? Okay, thank you. We will move on to public participation. All right, hearing none. We will move on to this report of the superintendent.
Thank you Donna. Gabby can't be here tonight so I'm going to work and talk about the fund statement. So the first thing I want to talk about is, we're gonna have a presentation later on in the agenda on medical insurance costs and some wellness costs, some wellness programs that we're putting into place. But I just wanted to review the fund statement. If you look on page 31, you'll notice that the balance of our insurance, our insurance fund balance is $260,000. It's a scary number but after last week's payroll, it's really up to $533,000. So we do see some, we see some increases in that. October and so far in November have been the lowest claims since February 2017. So if you combine that with almost a cut in half of our catastrophic claims, which we'll talk about later, that shows some improvement in the medical from last year. So we're hoping, we're seeing some changes and we're happy about that. And we're gonna talk a little bit later on in the agenda about how we're gonna even work harder to get those numbers better for us. We did get some more bad news last week from the governor. He's holding back $500,000 from the, this year from the town's ECS grant. So you combine that with the excess cost grant and the town is receiving almost a million dollars less than it did last year. The good part, the good part about that is that our Board of Finance thought about that last year and we, we created the budget with $3 million less. So we're able to, hopefully, I talked to Mike Manjus today, we're able to absorb that cost because we thought that that's what was gonna happen and we're actually better off than we thought. So, so that'll be fine. The issue is the contingency. If you remember that Monroe voted on a million dollar contingency and that the board was gonna get 65% and the town 35%. We did lose about $635,000 from the excess cost or special ed grant that wasn't anticipated. So that contingency will cover that cost. So it doesn't look like when we had talked about being able to maybe halfway through the year bring some of those things that we lost back, doesn't look like that's going to happen at this point. But we're in constant discussions with Board of Finance. I just talked to Mike Manjus again today and we went to the last Board of Finance meetings. We'll go to the next one, we'll see what happens with that. But I just wanted people to be, be aware of that. And I'll let you know what we find out about that. So that was that. Now, the second thing that I put on the superintendent's report is the medical insurance update. And at our last board meeting, I discussed it, we were having an insurance review with Cigna representatives and our Brown and Brown representatives. And Gabby, Jack and I did have that meeting where we discussed the last 12 months. From October 2016 to October 2017, we don't really have good news. We have, we've had some real bad experience with our claims. We discussed catastrophic claims and what, for everybody catastrophic are claims over $50,000. And we had 29 catastrophic claims in that time. But now we're down to 13 claims. So there's some real positive news. The increase from that October 2016 to, to October 2017, our medical increase was 33%. That's, that is a big increase. But remember, over the last five years, that increase has been under 10%. So this was a, that was a bad year last year. But our pharmacy claims are down 16%. And now with some of the good news, we're starting to see some change in that. We're hoping we've turned the corner and we can, we can move forward. Brown and Brown started a conversation with Cigna at the meeting and they're gonna aggressively look at our medical discounts. They're not comfortable with the discounts that we're getting so they're gonna look at more, more of that, medical discount, discounts. And they're also gonna shop around for a more competitive stop-loss quote. So all of that stuff happens, it really doesn't start happening until January, February, March, but they're gonna aggressively look, look at that. And what we're gonna hear about later on is the big push for wellness, in a wellness program that's happening in Monroe. Jack and I went to all the faculty meetings and we talked to the, we talked to all the staff and we said, "There's really only two ways to deal with the high cost of insurance. One is to pay a higher premium, which happened this year and no one's real happy about that. And the second way is to get a healthier, get a, get a healthier employee. So what are we gonna do with that?" So tonight, we're gonna learn about how we're gonna get a healthier workforce with some information about a wellness program. So we're looking at all ways, not just always increasing the cost. So we're gonna talk about that later, later when, when our representatives are here. The other thing to see is the budget presentation agenda. I just want to tentatively talk about a schedule and if you want to change it, we can change it. You've given, given us the three dates. So the first date is December 4th. We're gonna do a budget overview like we always do. And then we thought at that time, we're gonna talk about staffing, HR, professional development, curriculum, IT and operations at that first meeting. And the second meeting on December 11th, we're gonna talk about special education and high school athletics. And then on the third, we're gonna give you any budget update numbers that we have and then any changes that we have in the budget and then we're gonna have follow-up questions from the board. Does that sound like, it works for you guys? Okay.
Works.
So that's what we want to do. The other thing I wanted to just bring up because we, we are constantly talking about the state and, and some of the issues that we have is another unfunded mandate that we just discovered. You know that the budget was passed by the legislator, legislature. And what we discovered in there was that the budget, the money for teen, which is the new teacher orientation, the new teacher induction process, the money for teen has been removed. However, the law still states that we have to provide that service and we have to provide that opportunity for the new teachers in the induction program. So for Monroe, it's a $10,000 hit next year. It's, we don't have a choice, it's in law, we have to do it, but the funding that the state had is gone. So Monroe has another unfunded mandate next year of $10,000. We did include it in our budget. I did discuss this with JP and talked to him right before, the day before he was going, where they were going together to talk about fixing some of the issues in the budget. And he called back and said that it didn't, it didn't make it in the discussion for the budget fix. So as it stands right now, it's still required but not funded. So it's another one of those unfunded mandate, mandates. And I just wanted to share that with you. So the other thing I want to tell, talk to you about is the budget books. The budget books will be ready by next Wednesday and as we have in the past, we'll drop it off at your door for Wednesday for our Monday meeting. So we'll have that, we're keeping the budget book the same. It was actually an award-winning budget book last year, if you remember that?
Why change?
Had to mention that now, so why change? So we will pass that out to everyone and we bring a copy to the town hall too, so the town hall has a copy of that. And I don't know if you noticed, the parking lot, when you first came in by the guard shack, the little parking lot to the left, it is coned off. We have a water leak somewhere. So right now, the custodians are out there with someone from a local company that's gonna dig up the parking lot to try to find where the leak is.
It's in the parking lot, John?
It's in that small parking lot that, you know, before you go down, it's there and you can, and the water's coming up through the cracks, so clearly there's a leak somewhere.
Not affecting, I mean, that's super little close to the leak but not too close to the water leak.
No water leak, it's all going down the hill. So I just, I just got a text from Dan when the meeting started that he has the gentleman there and they're gonna start looking at that. It looks like it's the main that goes down to the field house. But in order to do that, they're gonna have to shut off the main and according to Dan, we don't, it doesn't seem like it's gonna be a problem for tomorrow, so get your stuff done because you'll be in.
There will be school.
There will be school.
Okay.
Okay, any questions on these, Tom?
No, anybody have questions? All right, then we will move on to presentations and first up is the Cigna Wellness Presentation. If you'd come up here to our table.
So we'd like to introduce Ann McCarthy from Cigna and Adrian D'Antonio from Brown and Brown. I know Jack-
Are they using the?
Yeah.
Okay.
Jack has been working with, with this group, so I don't know if you want to share?
Yeah, it's been a really good working relationship this year with, working with both Adrian and Ann. We were able to put together the walking program this year, which has really been a great success. We have 190 staff involved in that walking program and really some amazing results in terms of the amount of mileage that the staff is producing through that. People are very excited about doing it. So it's not only been good for health, it's also been good for morale within the district too. It's been a very positive experience. So we're looking to capitalize on that and continue this work with wellness.
Yeah, I'm Adrian from Brown and Brown. And as Jack said, we've been working towards wellness initiatives at the district. Our partner is Cigna for the insurance and they offer a lot of programs which most of them are at no cost as part of the benefits. So we're going to capitalize on those as much as we can. And I'm gonna let Ann take over.
Yeah, so again, hello everybody. I'm Ann McCarthy and I'm the Client Engagement Manager for Cigna. And I work directly with Monroe and John kind of outlined this before, we did have some bad news with some claims, but it also brings on opportunity. So it's an opportunity for me to be a little bit more present within the schools. What I want to do is, one of my goals is to relieve any employee concern as far as confidentiality is concerned. Get the employees to know about mysigna.com and the mobile app and all of the programs that they have available to them that a lot of the folks out there pay for nowadays such as Weight Watchers and things like that, but it's actually embedded within the medical benefits. And what we found from that meeting was that a lot of the employees don't know this. So the first thing that we want to do is kind of take baby steps and get the employees to know all of these programs that they have available to them and their, their spouses, dependents. So what we did was we put together, like I said, baby steps. So what we want to do is first and foremost, get the employees to know their numbers. So what does that mean? It means biometric screenings. And we want to make it easy because we know everybody is very busy and the last thing that they have time for is themselves, the last thing they should be making time for is themselves, but they don't. So what we decided to do is put some onsite biometric screenings available to them. So what that means is they're gonna have nurses onsite and the employees can sign up ahead of time with a time slot and go in and have their, and I'll go through this in a second, their numbers done. And then they'll have a brief coaching at the end of the numbers and the nurse will explain to them exactly what it is. So what they're gonna be testing for is blood pressure, body mass index, glucose and cholesterol. So they'll have that information in their hands. A lot of, a lot of people don't know their current, know their numbers right now and that's the first thing that we need to get folks to know. Because, believe it or not, we've had biometric screenings where people have, not to scare you, but taken out on the ambulance because they're that high risk and they don't even know it. So we really need to get people to understand that they need to take time for themselves and they need to know their own health status. So that's what we're gonna be doing with the biometric screenings. It will become an important part of the health assessment. That's another perk that a lot of the employees are not aware of. We did a, a brief look and we don't have a lot of completions right now in the Cigna Health Assessment. So we want to get the employees to do that. So once their biometric screening is complete, those numbers will actually flow right through into the Cigna Health Assessment. So it's one less thing for the employee to have to do. And that, so that's the health assessment right there. And what I'm gonna be talking about at the end of the presentation is mysigna.com and the mobile app. Because all of these things that I'm talking about, you can access through mysigna.com and the mobile app. The reason why our health assessment is so important is because it's completely brand-new, it's gamified. It used to be very stagnant and too many words and, and now it's almost like a game. But it's, it's very modern and it even addresses the opioid crisis right now. And it addresses your dental and oral health and things like that. So once the employee goes through it, it's probably 10 minutes it'll take to complete. You can go to the next page. Once they complete the health assessment, it'll give them a score, but it'll also tell them what they're doing right and then it'll also tell them areas that they can improve upon. So for example, if someone smokes or if they want to lose weight or reduce stress, because none of us have stress, right? So that's pretty much a given. So it'll, that health assessment will direct you to some of those free embedded programs within our medical benefit. And one of them is our lifestyle management programs. And what that means is, again, if you want to, I'm gonna use quit smoking as an example. If you want to quit smoking, you would call up and you would speak to one of our coaches. And it's an opt-in program. This is not a program where Cigna starts calling you every day and bothering you and asking you if you had a pack a day or anything like that. It's completely opt-in. They call you when you want to be called. So you set the times with your coaches. So let's say Thursday's at 5 o'clock or 6 o'clock is the best time for you. They'll call you to have your coaching session. If you don't answer, they'll call you back in five minutes. If you don't answer again, they will not call you back again. So these, that's why these programs are so successful because the employee starts to get a relationship with their coach. It's the same coach. That they, they don't call and get a different person every single time. They have that one coach and they develop a really great relationship. We've had so many wonderful stories. Other clients of mine, we've, we've found real-life stories from that client of someone who's off their diabetic medication, has lost 15 pounds and they, they want to be, you know, the face for that, for that employer. So with the tobacco program, for example, they would call up and they would speak to one of our coaches. And it's a holistic coaching program. So for example, if you do want to quit smoking, our coaches aren't going to focus on you quitting smoking. They're going to ask you if you're stressed about something. What's a trigger for your, for a cigarette? Every single coaching program does a depression screening because oftentimes, stress and depression and smoking and obesity is all tied together. So they would be getting a free pack of, if they could choose, for example, if they wanted to try the Nicorette gum or the patch, we would send them that along with a coaching kit. If the stress program, there's another kit that we would send as well. The weight program, you would get a pedometer, you'd get a tape measure, which I dreaded when I got mine in the mail, but I knew it was coming, and a workbook. So it's about an eight-week program depending on, but the smoking program, for example, has an 87% success. So it's really getting the employees to know these programs are available to you and these coaches are, are folks who don't want to be in the red tape business anymore. They're doctors, they're nurses and they just want to help people. So they, they really are good people. And if we can start to get the movement going and then everyone talks to someone else about how successful the program was for them, then someone else will give it a try. So that's, you could also get a portion plate in the mail.
Did you want me to go?
What?
Oh, here we go.
Yeah, yeah, no, I'm good with that. That's the way you want it. Another issue, John mentioned, or maybe he didn't mention, but the chronic population is the majority of your costs, your claim costs. And we also have a program for that. It's another coaching program but it's, it's more intense. So chronic meaning you're diabetics, you're COPD folks, you're morbidly obese, major depression, things like that. So these, these are people who may not be aware that they have these programs available to them. And they're also folks who have gaps in care and that's costing you money as well because what that means is, when you're a diabetic, you need to go to your PCP but you also need to go and see a podiatrist. You also need to have your vision checked. Because what comes along with that condition is foot issues and blindness and things like that. So what we see in our systems is that someone's a diabetic, we see that they're not going and getting their vision checked. They're not going to a podiatrist. So that's called a gap in care. And what that means is essentially they're going to get worse. So our, our claim system sees, tells our coaches that. So this is similar where it's an opt-in program, but again, you can see how much more intense it is when they're working with the employees. Because what they're gonna focus on with the chronic is the gaps in care that I, that I spoke about. They're going to look at their prescription medications. Are they maybe abusing a medication? Could they talk to, to another doctor, things like that? So there's all kinds of things that the coach will focus on. Treatment decision support, so if they have to go have surgery, our coaches will support them with that, help them find the best quality of care. They become, they become really close with them and they do form a really great relationship. So again, this is a free program that's embedded within the medical benefits and I'd be surprised if I had one raise of hand of anyone that already knew this. I'm gonna buy a lot of tickets today. So that's what we want to do today, is focus on making sure the employees know that these programs, not push them on the employees at all whatsoever, but just educate them and, and so they know that they're available to them.
How do you target the people that are, that are part of that group?
I'm sorry?
How do you target the individuals that are part of that group?
The chronic folks?
Yes.
So what we do at Cigna, if we see a chronic, like a claim come through, we'll send, we'll have a phone call and we'll reach out to them and we'll, and it'll say, you know, "Cigna's calling, would you like to speak to a coach?" And that's the majority of these phone calls that people are, you know, they're, Cigna's calling about. And we actually have a piece, a collateral that says, "Why is Cigna calling me?" And it tells you exactly why they're calling, it addresses confidentiality, things like that. So I'm going to share that.
Can I chime in too?
Absolutely.
The other thing we've talked about too is putting a face on Cigna. You know, we're very lucky to have Ann here and part of what we talked about with these screenings is, the screenings are voluntary but the benefits are, we have Ann there, so employees have questions about their insurance, they have a question about healthcare, they have a person that they now associate with the company. Cigna's enormous. And, you know, the general perception from employees is they're calling this huge amorphous faceless organization. So if we can get Ann here at the screenings, we, we break down that barrier, we develop more trust. And really, the essence of what this is all about is addressing small issues before they become big issues, which is good for every single one of our employees and in the end will help these costs.
Especially if there's people on track and making sure that no gaps are part of the process.
That's a huge issue is gaps in care, a huge issue. There's, it's, it's really helpful. Once, once you get one employee engaged with a coach, they'll start talking and then it'll, it just is like a landfall, everybody else starts calling and they're really great folks. Our coaches are wonderful people. So, yeah, another thing I wanted to address before we go on to that is I do want to be at all those screenings. And then what I want to do too is kind of educate the employees on the health assessment because it's really great to go back and take the health assessment, you know, that day or, you know, people are a little bit motivated after they know their numbers and they've talked to the coach a little bit. So I, I'll be addressing that as well. And then it'll, it just is like a landfall. Everybody else starts calling. And they're really great folks. Our coaches are wonderful people. Yeah. Another thing I wanted to address before we go on to that is I do want to be at all those screenings. And then what I want to do too is kind of educate the employees on the health assessment. Because it's really great to go back and take the health assessment, you know, that day. Or, you know, people are a little bit motivated after they know their numbers and they've talked to the coach a little bit. So I, I'll be addressing that as well. And of course, I'll have giveaways and fun stuff because that's what people love to have. So yeah. Just be mindful of time. Another thing I did want to make sure everyone was aware of, because especially with your population, is the telehealth benefit. And I don't know if you've already heard about it. But what it is, it's a, it's not meant to replace your primary care physician at all whatsoever. But it is great if you have a condition such as pink eye, a rash, sinusitis, strep throat, something like that. Nothing major, obviously. But you don't want to have to call your PCP, make the appointment, sit in the office, go in his office, wait for him to come in, explain to him what you already know. So what we've put in place for you is a telehealth benefit. So instead of doing all of those things I just spoke about, you would simply call and you would speak to, you could choose whichever one you want, Amwell or MD Live. And you could speak to a board-certified doctor over the phone. And they could prescribe medication right to your pharmacy right then and there. You don't leave your house. You don't leave your desk. Well, hopefully you're not at your desk if you're sick. But, but alls you have to do. So it's great if you're a mom and you have sick kids. You know, if you have one of those small things. I was just talking to John. I called on Saturday. My son had what we thought was strep throat. So originally, we were on the phone. And then we had a Skype with him because he wanted to see if he had strep throat. He didn't, but it was 42 bucks and I was done. I didn't even go to the doctor at all. So it's a, it's a really great benefit. I would encourage you to register online with one of them prior to one of your visits. It'll just save you maybe five minutes. And by registering online, you're going to put in your name, your member number, your PCP. Because any information that takes place, any conditions, and they're going to ask you, "Would you like this information to go to your primary care physician?" And of course, you would say yes and it would be sent over there. So there's some information that you can put in beforehand to save yourself some time when you do not feel well. But again, not meant to replace any PCP relationships at all. But just, they wanted, Monroe wanted to make sure it was to make your lives a little bit easier. And again, it really is, it's a great program. The only thing they can't prescribe is narcotics. So everything else they can prescribe. And when you do register on mycigna.com, this is kind of what you're going to see. If you're already asking, "What's the difference between Amwell and MD Live?", not much at all. So, but Cigna wanted to give you a choice, so there you go. There may be a little bit of a difference as far as which primary care physicians participate with MD Live and which is with Amwell. But I've used MD Live and it's been, it works for me, so. And last but not least, all of these things I just talked to you about, you can access on mycigna.com. We have, we have a good registration rate, but we need to get it up a little bit more. Because you're really going to want to take the health assessment. We are talking about, can't promise maybe a raffle prize or things like that. So it'll be important. So if you're not already registered on mycigna.com, I really would encourage you to register. You'd be surprised what's out there and the time you can save by being registered on mycigna.com. You can automatically download our mobile app after that. You can access your ID cards. I don't even carry my ID cards with me anymore. I just pull the app up. You can access your claims. You can view, if you're, for example, my son and I were in the doctor's office and they wanted to prescribe him something. And I just quickly looked up the drug to make sure it wasn't something that he was allergic to. And, you know, if there was something that, an alternative that would have been cheaper. I did it right then and there in the doctor's office. So there's a lot you can do out there on the mobile app. And there's two tabs would make it really simple. There's the My Health tab, which is all of those fun programs that I just talked about, Lifestyle Management. And then there's your tab where you can view all of your claims. So everything is kept separate. The mobile app is absolutely fantastic. So very simple, easy to use. Once you start using it, you're not going to, you're, you're going to use it all the time. So, so that was the, am I forgetting anything?
No, I think that's it.
I wanted to be mindful of your time, so.
Yes.
I'm sorry that this is the face you're going to be seeing a lot, but I'm going to be here, darn it.
You have a question?
Ann, real quick. You said when you called for your son, the fee was how much?
Forty-two dollars.
Okay, compared to regularly, what, 69, 70?
For Cigna, I, everything goes right to a deductible. So if I went to my PCP, it would have been 230 dollars.
Gotcha. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And with the screening, the cost structure is, how's it work with the screenings? If we do that, what's the cost to employees?
Zero. It flows, flows through as a claim as per Cigna. Correct. Correct. Flows right through as a claim.
And with that, the screening information then can be used for the annual physical? So there's a benefit there too and reduce costs for testing?
Absolutely. Absolutely. Yeah. And like I said, that information flows right into the health assessment. So it's just one less thing they have to remember.
So is this for all Monroe employees, including retired, or just for current?
Now, it's a loaded question.
Well, since it's a retired teacher in front of you from Monroe.
Jerry, you're excited about it!
Well, I'm just wondering. I get calls constantly from the retired Monroe teachers, so I'm bringing up the question.
I would think so. They're members, right?
They're members, yeah. Cigna members.
So you've been running them at every single building?
So as they're watching this now, they'll know that they're... Thank you. That's what I was wondering. Thank you. You just saved me a lot of calls.
Any other questions you have for us?
So the, the wellness, the whole wellness, is there a survey that the employee has to take part in?
We've talked about that, yeah. And that's something we want to construct. I think last we left it is after we get through the walking program, we're going to get that out. And that's something we'd like to do on an ongoing basis. But that would be our first place to gather the data is after the walking.
And I think as they said, you know, we had a bad history and our costs went up, but it has an opportunity. So I think people, as people see that this could save them some money and will save the district also because we're, you know, we're part of those claims. So I think it's a good time and people are ready for that. And, you know, that's illustrated by the walking program and all those people that have participated in that.
This is one of the most successful walking programs around.
I've never, I've actually never heard of one without hiring, you know, fly in from the employees.
190 employees, yeah. And we've already expended from the Cigna Wellness Dollars over $2,000 in race registrations for staff. That's 5Ks, 10Ks, half marathons. Lot of, lot of activity going on.
Preventative help is fantastic.
And you can hear, they're talking, people are talking about it. People are interested in talking about it. And I think it's some camaraderie and, and I think it's working.
Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you for having us. We appreciate it.
Appreciate coming. All right. We will move on to our second presentation of the evening. And this is going to be a presentation on bullying. And Ann O'Doy and Mark Schwartz are going to be doing it. Are they using the screen also?
Yes, they are.
All right.
One of the things that we talked about a few weeks ago was all the different activities that we're doing in the district to talk about bullying, but more about creating a positive climate in, in the schools. And there are lots of programs out there. And I, I had a parent ask me, "Could we be involved in a program that was in October?" And I said, "But we're involved in Red Ribbon Week", which was last, which was at Jackie Hollow last week. So we're in a lot of different programs and I thought it was important that we share, really, our thoughts about bullying and also how we are creating this positive climate in the district. So Ann, who's the K-12 coordinator for Secondary Instructional Leader, but she works K-12 for guidance. And Mark Schwartz, Assistant Principal here at Massey, who really works with our students on that.
Thank you, Matt. So as John was kind of saying, we, each year, we, we are mandated to update staff on bullying legislation. And we did think it would be a good idea to kind of bring you guys up to speed on what we do, how we handle bullying, what bullying specifically is, and really what bullying isn't. So I'm going to go first and kind of talk to you about how we deal with issues of bullying or bullying types of behaviors. And then Ann will kind of talk about some of the preventative measures that we have and some of the educational components that we have for our students. So I am really not one that likes to read PowerPoint slides, but I'm going to read this definition for you. This is really pulled right off of the Monroe PS website. So just bear with me and listen carefully to this very long sentence. "Bullying is the repeated use by one or more students of a written or, or electronic communication such as cyberbullying, directed at or referring to another student attending school in the same district, or a physical act or gesture by one or more students repeatedly directed at another student attending school in the same district." That, and this is where it goes over kind of the damages that bullying can cause, causes harm, causes fear of self-harm, creates a hostile environment, and/or disrupts the educational process. So that's what bullying is and that's what bullying can do. And this is what we want to avoid. And this is how we, you know, we avoid this and we can really maintain the peace in our schools. So let's talk a little bit less about bullying, but certain types of behavior. Because thankfully, we really don't have a heck of a lot of what we would define as bullying according to that definition that I just read to you. I wish I could tell you we have no types of bullying ever. We occasionally have to deal with that. And occasionally, we also have to deal with what I refer to as just kind of mean and/or harassing types of behavior. They're not terribly common, but every now and then, that, those are behaviors that, that I do certainly have to deal with. But bullying is basically when it's the same person, same offender, going after the same person, the same victim. Those are the types of things that I try to intervene on, that we, the administrative team, try, try to intervene on and prevent from reoccurring. And it's important to note that sometimes these types of mean or harassing types of behavior can go on outside of school. But if they cause a disruption to a student back in school, it is our prerogative and our right to deal with these types of issues. Oh, thank you, Jen. One of the terms that you hear a lot about these days is cyberbullying and cyber harassment. You know, every student, probably from middle school up, if not younger, has a phone these days. And what I've come to realize in terms of dealing with these types of things over the years is that face-to-face interactions, people are not very likely to say something mean or insulting to one another. Maybe on a telephone, you can hear the person's voice. It's, it's a little personal. So maybe people would say something mean. But when they're just kind of texting or typing something into a text or using one of the apps such as Instagram or Snapchat, something like that, kids really unfortunately sometimes let the meanness fly. And, you know, we do have education on this and Ann's going to talk a little bit about that. Because when things are put out there electronically, it's real easy for them to come to my attention and for people to show me exactly who said what to whom. And that is something that we can intervene on. Oftentimes, staff will bring these things to our attention if they realize that these things are going on. So they kind of have their ear to the ground. And it's important that they report that to the administrations because we document everything. Everything we do to intervene, we keep a file on. So sometimes if staff intervene on things and they let it go, they might not realize exactly how widespread things could be. So we ask that they bring everything to our attention. I'll, I'll speak in a moment just a little bit about some of the consequences that might come to a student if he or she engages in mean types of behavior such as this. But it's important to note that we're not all about just dishing out consequences. Really, we want to lend counseling for both the offender and the victim. It's important certainly that people learn that these types of behaviors are not, it's not okay to be mean. It's not okay to use, you know, your phone to say mean things about things and to spread things around, that kind of thing. But for the victim, it's also important to learn, especially in the high school age, to look somebody in the eye and say, "Hey, you know, knock it off. That's not okay." Or to do so for a peer who might need some assistance as well. It's a difficult thing to navigate, but it's an important skill for kids to understand. Really, the consequences for bullying and harassing types of behavior vary enormously. It could be just a very simple conversation in my office, which for some students is scary enough. But it can really range from detentions, multiple detentions, to suspensions, et cetera. It really depends upon the severity and how, how these things have been going on. If this person has been dealing with other people in the same way, et cetera. And again, that speaks to the type of documentation that we try to keep. Bullying is reported to us usually, I would say, at least as far as when it comes to my attention, in person is, is how it is typically brought to my attention. There are forms available to students to report bullying, whether it's coming towards them or towards another person. And as you probably know, last spring, we rolled out the Anonymous Reports app. This is not an app specifically designed for the reporting of bullying, but it is something that has been used when someone, I don't even necessarily know if it's anonymous. I don't always know who is sending the information. But the administrative team gets an alert on, we get an alert on our phones and it's from someone who might be reporting that someone is being mean. And we deal with that. Might they report that students are smoking in the J-Hall bathroom? And we can deal with that too. So it's kind of an immediate thing that comes to our attention and we can deal with it. So that's been a very useful, useful app. When it was first rolled out in the spring last year, we had a lot of reports. Some of them were, you know, I think the kids thought that it was kind of a fun way to sort of joke around about things. That has thankfully kind of died down. And now we've gotten a handful of reports this year that were serious reports that, you know, warrant investigation. So it's a really good thing that I think our district has put out there for our students to make use of. And now I'm going to turn this over to Ann, who's going to tell you more about the program, K-12.
Okay. Good evening, everybody. So I'm sure everybody's aware that there's different philosophies and thoughts about why children bully. Okay? Many of them are frustrated with their emotion, maybe frustrated in home life, frustrated in the classroom, frustrated at friends, lack of attention sometimes from the home life. Sometimes they are victims of bullying and so they act out those towards others. It's a learned behavior unless there's, unless there's a major mental health component to it. And, you know, watching violent films, seeing role models, imitate and dominate, you know, are all things that possibly could make a young life impressionable. So how does the Monroe School System help all of their students? Protect against bullying and also protect against even creating bullies? The elementary school model really across the board. This is the first time that many of the students are navigating all the social interactions. Probably some of them have had preschool support. But now they're in the kindergarten. They're learning how to respect. Teachers are talking about it constantly. I'm sure we're all familiar with the book, The Most Important Things We Learned, was in kindergarten. I don't know the exact name of it. But, but the entire teaching staff, the entire guidance staff is always speaking along those lines. For the K-12 guidance curriculum, it's about believing in yourself, in confidence and kindness, how to navigate your feelings when you do have feelings that are overwhelming to you. How exactly do you communicate to someone who has just angered you or took your crayon or pulled your hair? These are actual lessons that the guidance counselors do in there to actually role model. Okay, this happens to you. What do you say to that person? There's lots of "I feel" statements. "I feel angry" when you, and you, you own it. You communicate it. And this is being role modeled in the elementary school from K through 5 across the board. It's just a very, very important time for all the kids to learn about different ways. They, giving compliments, you know, it's a positive attitude. There's a lot of positive behavior systems in elementary school in Fawn Hollow, Stepney. They're giving positive behavior awards. In all the elementary schools, there's a Student Ambassador Program where the older students actually are given, they're given a training. And then they're in charge of including kids. So they're, they're going around the whole building at recess time. If they see that there's a student that's not included, they go up to that person and say, "Hey, can I help you? What did you want to do?" So everybody's on alert. People are empowered. The kids are empowered. And they're given lots of feedback. They don't talk too much about bullying K through 4. It's really not named. They're talking about kindness, respect, appreciating people's differences. When they get to 5th grade, there are, there is definitely some curriculum along those lines with bullying that they start to name how to prevent becoming a bully. And how also to, if a bully does approach you, how do you act? How does your friend act? So there definitely is lots of education in the elementary schools across this board. It's, it's constantly being addressed. In the middle school, and I think K through 12 in all of this, there's lots of individual counseling, even through the elementary school. If we know somebody is troubled, is having a hard time with behavior, even though they've been spoken to, they've been given strategies. Well, they are pulled out during downtime to talk about their feelings, their emotions, and given strategies to make a better decision next time. So some of the programs over at the middle school, they have Rock Week, which is Random Acts of Caring and Kindness Week. They do lots of different projects. They put positive notes on everybody's locker. They did Ben's Bells Project, which is something that promotes kindness across their, not only their school community. They give bus drivers letters of gratitude and thankfulness. They just finished Red Ribbon Week down at the middle school, STEM and also Jackie Hollow. Just talking about, they really addressed cyberbullying. That was really something that was coming to the forefront in the last couple of years. So the SROs did a presentation along with the counselors and the teachers about how to prevent cyberbullying and how not to get involved and how... and the teachers, about how to prevent cyberbullying and how not to get involved, and how important it is to create a culture of respect and positiveness. Pink Promise Day was something that they started again also, and that's a promise to be kind to your peers, a promise to stand up to your peers. You know, it's a very difficult skill, we, in high school, for you to stand up for someone else who's possibly getting bullied. But they've been, they're being taught this through kindergarten, and hopefully, we're creating and the parents are also creating, more importantly, young people who have a strong constitution and can actually have the courage to speak up and share something when something is going amiss. And, you know, I think it's one of the courageous things that some of these young people can do. In middle school, there's also lessons. The lessons are mainly about their strengths and weaknesses, getting to know themselves. You know, when kids get to know themselves and respect each other's differences and know each other, there's a tendency to be connected, you know? I think part of the culture of trying not to give bullies any power, get them involved, get them connected, get them, so people know them, so they don't have any power. In the high school, a lot of, you know, the bullying education, in, you know, the first day of class meetings, as the kids come through the building, there's class meetings for ninth through 12th graders. You know, we also talk about being respectful, being kind, the high expectations we have of Massach High School students. So, and they're hearing that from the administrators, to the teachers, to the counselors, from day one. In advisory, which we have every about two weeks, there are sometimes programs about cyberbullying, social media, respecting, being kind. As guidance counselors, we do a lot more individual counseling with the victim and with the bully. We talk to both to try to get to the root cause of why students are acting the way they do. And it's sometimes very complicated. However, we've found that with constant intervention, stable intervention consistently, that things are changing. Kids are being transformed. Extracurricular clubs, lots of things. We want kids to get involved, Be Positive Club, Interact Club, you know, even all the business clubs. Any club that we can get these kids involved in, I think promotes more of an interwoven culture, a more communal sense. In grade 12, there's a program that the administration brings in called the Yellow Dress, and this is more, addresses domestic abuse and also dominance and things like that. So that is, it's a pretty mature program, but it also brings to light in relationships, people being bullied or not. So, so across K through 12, there's definitely lots of education regarding it. We definitely always are coming to the table, trying to think of other ways that we can be effective and helpful to the kids and support them, trying to bring in more programs in order to do that. So, that's generally speaking, that's what we're doing. I didn't talk too long yet. No.
Does anybody have questions?
How long has the program been in place?
What program exactly?
The bullying prevention program.
Well, I think this is how, this is like operating procedure, pretty much, all of what's been happening. You know, we've been doing most of all these programs since...
I'd say it's a work in progress. It's fluid. I mean, some of the things are new, like the anonymous alerts, but the Yellow Dress Program, for example, that we provide for the seniors. Actually, I've been doing that for quite some time now. I would guess around almost a decade, dating violence and that kind of a thing. It is a more of a mature topic.
Each school has a climate committee and a safe climate committee, so they look at what they can do to bring in, to change some of this. We know that there are consequences for behaviors, but it's really important for us to start to create a culture and a climate so that kids don't think it's okay to do that, the harassing behavior.
And I think it's important. One last, one last thing. It's like, you know, I'm talking about some of these things that we do, but I don't want it to sound like this is such a gigantic issue here. I do think we're really blessed. At the high school, I can certainly speak for, we have an incredibly kind community and caring community here, you know, and I think that we will always strive to improve, but we've got a great place here with good citizens.
I mean, one of the things that we didn't mention is just the athletic teams in the school. They're always doing community service. They're always doing kind of random acts of kindness as a team. So I think even the athletic department is also bringing that to the people that they work with, too.
Will mentioned, you know, they were respectful at the state championship. At the semifinal, we actually got a phone call, I think Joe got a phone call from the administration over at E.O. Smith High School, who, they were very complimentary. They called us, specifically said, hey, what a great bunch of fans you got there, you know, which is awesome to hear. So, yeah.
And when something happens, we deal with it. We deal with it right away. I mean, we have gotten police involved. If we need to, we bring our SROs in. If it's something, you know, we have implemented the bullying protocol, which is pretty, it's laid out by the state of Connecticut, you know, what we have to do and how we have to do it. And we have to report to the state, and there have been times when we've had to do that. Most of our kids, many of our kids, once you start implementing this and you just bring up the bullying protocol, they tend to back off a little, because it is such an enormous thing to happen for a kid in school now. And I think one of the, just one last thing, a lot of times the word bullying is thrown around all the time. It's thrown around, you know, by parents, it's thrown around by other kids, you know, and I think we have to be clear that we do have harassing, mean-spirited behavior that we have to deal with all the time, and that's different than someone being bullied. Just because something happens doesn't necessarily mean, well, that's a bully. But that word has been interchangeable with mean-spirited and negative behavior, and we're trying to get kids to understand the difference with that. Thank you, guys.
All right. We will move on to old business. First up is the curriculum proposal that we heard last meeting, which is the instructional materials and resource proposal for the history, social studies, child development course for grades 10 to 12. Do I have a motion to approve this as presented? Thank you, George. Do I have a second? Thank you, Jerry. And just as a reminder, this is no cost, because she went out and got a...
A weller.
The weller.
The weller, which is awesome.
Does anybody have discussion on this? All right, hearing none, all in favor? Great, thank you. Motion passes. Item B, which is the international high school trip. Again, this was presented at a first review last time. This is the Massach Music Department is requesting the board's approval to offer students travel and performance opportunity in Iceland from April 11th through April 17th in 2019.
And Julia's 22.
And Julia is here this evening. If we have questions for her. Do I have a motion to approve this? Thank you. Do I have a second? Thank you, Jerry. Discussion. And Julia, why don't you come up just in case? Do we have any discussion on this item or any question, follow-up questions for Julia?
Originally, we were doing this for incoming freshmen to junior. Am I saying that correctly?
Mm-hmm.
Have we gone out to Jackie Hollow yet in STEM to offer?
No, we haven't offered anything to anyone pending the board's review. But, you know, after the conversation here at the board last time, I did discuss it with staff, and they're willing to present it to eighth graders. You know, Lisa Holman's more comfortable because she's been their teacher all the way through middle school. Inquired, they would be new to their teacher in freshman year. But with Mike Ansis moving up in band, he does know those eighth graders, too. So it made the group feel more comfortable with that. So with your approval, we would, we would put that out to eighth grade as well.
And I will say, my child has already told us, who's an eighth grader, going, that she's going. After, you know, hearing about it.
That's an expensive child, yes.
Yeah, she's an expensive child, because she told me it was on her bucket list and she had to go. But anyway, but she immediately said to me, well, can I get the itinerary so I can share it with all my band?
Did you tell her it was pending board review?
And that's what I said. So I said, no, you can't get it now, but if the board approves it, I'll be more than happy to have you share that with your eighth grade friends to get them to go on the trip. So I'm sure if we do approve it, I'll be signing up for a trip tomorrow morning.
We also did have interest from families who wanted to do the sort of travel along pricing, and we had a very nice conversation with some members of the high school music Parents Association, who said that they really get the idea of the trip itinerary being for the kids, the families going along, and then us as a meeting some free time, and that that could be a very nice arrangement.
That's awesome.
And it makes a larger group, and it makes the cost better for everybody.
Ellen?
How many staff members are going?
We need to maintain a one to 10 ratio for travel with students, and that could include parent chaperones, not parents traveling with their families, but people who are on duty. So, you know, at the moment, I'm assuming we'll have the minimum and have the three ensemble directors be the first three chaperones, and then after that, every 10 students will add another adult.
Anybody else have anything? All right. All right, hearing none, all in favor of approving this trip? Great. Motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Trip is on.
Nice job.
Thank you.
All right, we will move on to a new business, and just to let you know, I did get a text from Carlos that he is on his way, so he should be here shortly. New business, recommendation of the superintendent search committee, excuse me. So as everybody knows, the Board of Education, along with three additional people, which was Marie Blake from the MEA, Jack Ceccholini from the Administrators Union, and Krista DeLeo, who was our parent council rep, who's the president of the Monroe Parents Council, joined us for our superintendent search committee. So thank you very much to everybody. And it consisted of, obviously, of all board members and these additional three people. So we, I do appreciate everybody's input and their meetings coming out and going forth to, for the superintendent search. We did have an internal candidate that, after interviewing, the committee wants to recommend unanimously as the new superintendent of Monroe Schools. So with that said, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Dr. Jack Zamory as superintendent of schools as of July 1st, 2018. Thank you. Do I have a second? Thank you, Jerry. As I said, discussion. As I said, we did have an internal candidate, so before we went outside and conducted a full search with a search firm, that would have cost a ignominious amount of money, we decided, as the committee, to interview the internal candidate first, to see if this is a path that we wanted to go down, down, or we did want to go outside. And after meeting with Jack and interviewing him, it was very obviously clear from his experience and what he brings to the table in our discussion with him during the interview, that he is the person that we would want to lead the Monroe School District going forward after John retires on June 30th. So, does anybody have anything else to say about that, about our interview or anything? Thank you, David.
If I may, I just, if I can speak for us in the committee a little bit, when you have good, qualified, educated people within the staff, and it's very apparent that we do, it's important to promote from within for numerous reasons. Not just to save the money, but that is, that is a factor. Why spend the money when you have good, qualified people here? So I just wanted to speak to our staff for a little, for a moment, to say, thank you for being good and qualified and moving up and educating yourself, and I hope this will stir some good morale within, and it's going to create some other growth and movement that we're going to talk about. But it was important to us to look inside first and not ignore the talent that we have with, right under our noses.
Absolutely.
So thank you.
Absolutely. Well said.
Well said, David.
I'll just go over a little bit about Jack's background. He does have a doctorate in educational experience from Southern Connecticut State University. He has a sixth year in educational leadership from Southern Connecticut State University, a master's in music, concentration in music education from the University of Connecticut, and a bachelor's science in music education from the University of Connecticut. Obviously, he's our current assistant superintendent. Prior to that, he was our director of IT and operations. Prior to that, he came to us almost six years ago from Middlebury Elementary School, which is in Region 15. He was the director of finance for, excuse me, director of fine arts for Region 15. Before that, he was the band director for Newtown High School, and also the band director for Danbury High School. And he is, was a graduate assistant and lecturer at the University of Connecticut, and the band director at Circaville Middle School. He brings a wealth of knowledge and a wealth of leadership, and we're very happy that he did accept my offer to be our superintendent. So, does anybody have anything else before we move on to the vote?
I'm just very, very happy for Monroe School System to have Dr. Jack Zamory as our superintendent. The interview process and all of the qualities that we were looking for in a candidate, you personified. And it was, it was a great feeling to not have any reservations about it whatsoever and to be so excited for our district.
Thank you.
Anybody else? All right, hearing none. Do I have, I have a motion to appoint Dr. Jack Zamory as the superintendent of Monroe Public Schools as of July 1st, 2018. All in favor? Great, thank you very much. Motion passes unanimously. We will, well, I was going to say, before Jack talks, we will be having a little reception and celebration in January. We felt that instead of trying to rush it before the holidays, it would just be easier just to do it after the holidays. So we will be having that to invite the community and obviously everybody from our district, all our employees, to come and celebrate with Jack and his new appointment. But that will be information coming in January. Go ahead, Jack.
I just want to very simply thank you very much for your continued faith in me. This is really a special district in so many ways. Our students are really, they're truly exceptional. And as you heard in the presentation tonight, granted, it was a topic about bullying, but the thing that continually comes up is the character of our students really is exceptional. At the soccer game on Saturday, the talent on the field was wonderful, but the thing I came away with, our kids, both on the field and in the stands, they're just great kids. The staff, their professionalism, dedication, the second to none, and this leadership team is truly amazing. So I feel very fortunate to be here and feel very fortunate to continue to help to lead this organization. I want to thank this board for their continued efforts on every child's behalf in this district. So thank you.
Thank you. Great, thank you. I also need a, I also need a motion to approve the superintendent's contract commencing July 1st, 2018 through June 30th, 2021. The compensation package totaling $197,400 for July 1st, 2018 through June 30th, 2019. Thank you. Second? Thank you, Jerry. Do I have any discussion on this? This is a 0% increase. This is what our current superintendent gets, so it's the exact same contract. All right, hearing none, all in favor? Great, thank you. Motion passes. We will move on to the next item. Carlos isn't here, but I'm hoping that he does show up and come in as we're going through this. We want to recognize both Jim Martinez and Carlos Reynoso for their years of service on the Board of Education. Unfortunately, it is a difficult time when we have to say goodbye to somebody, and we're sorry that we have to say goodbye and the election came at the way it did, because both Carlos and Jim, I'm sure everybody will echo, have been amazing contributors to this board. They have truly been very dedicated individuals, and we appreciate all their service because Monroe Schools are where they are, because both of yourself, Jim, and also Carlos's dedication and work here on the board the past two years. So we appreciate that. So we have a little something for each of you. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Carlos is still not here, so I guess we'll have to do that when he...
Do you mind if I just say?
No, absolutely. And if anybody else would like to say anything, please.
Just quickly, this has been a very surreal, I guess, last few days, last couple of weeks. Even walking in here tonight was, was difficult. All that to say that, you know, it is what it is, and I wouldn't trade, I wouldn't change this experience for the world. Anyone who really knows me knows that I, since I can remember, since childhood, I knew education was something I wanted to, to do. My wanting to contribute my time, or whatever I can, whatever I was able to contribute as an educator to this board and this district, it was very humbling for me to get the opportunity to be here. I, I only feel this is a way of giving back to the incredible and amazing staff that's, that's present here in the Monroe Public Schools. I mean, I've been in other districts and, you know, my children are my life, and they're in your hands, and I couldn't be prouder and happier to have, to have them here and to have been a part of this experience. So I wish my successors well. I know that among the board here, I have gained true friends, and that means everything. And I have never, you know, I'm not a politician, I don't aspire to become one, I never thought about party lines up until the campaigning for this. Because, you know, I had to, but, you know, my fellow board members made that possible. There was ne, there were never any lines between us. It was always all about the kids. And so, thank you, everyone. Thank you for all that you did to help make this experience great for me, and I'm still, you know, even as a, as a parent and taxpayer, I'll still be, you know, available to do whatever I can to help. Thank you.
Thank you. And I will say, Jim, you're a good man. When I was standing out at Monroe, early in the morning, I was freezing, and Jim showed up and goes, "Here, I bought you a coffee." I was like, "Oh, God bless you." I was, I hadn't had any coffee yet in the morning, and, oh, just made my day. But absolutely, does anybody have anything else to stretch out? So with Carlos shows up. Alan.
I just want to thank Jim Martinez for his dedication to the board, brought a wealth of knowledge, a ton of educational experience and background with them, and your input was very valuable, and you're going to be missed.
It's Alan's fault that I got him. But then I forgave him the first day I was here, so...
Well, we're glad that Alan got you here because we really, truly, it's been a pleasure having you here. Anybody else? All right. Thank you. Well, I guess we're going to move to adjournment, and hopefully we'll just do Carlos at the end and stuff. He shows up. I didn't get any further updates. Does anybody have anything else? All right, hearing none, have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you. Second? Okay.
If I don't raise my hand, then we can stop.
All right. Any discussion? I'm trying to stretch out. I can see Carlos walking through the door, but no. All right, hearing none, all in favor? Okay, motion passes. Thank you.